Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Notice of an open work session of the City Council of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri, July 3rd, 2017.
Can we have it as January 3rd, not July?
January, January.
Just all day in July.
Yeah. Okay, Eric?
Thank you, sir. So, in recent work sessions and other council meetings, we discussed briefly the idea that the North Kansas City Fire Department is, would like to work on becoming an accredited department. And I thought it would be useful for the council to learn more about what accreditation means, what it involves, what has to be done to become accredited, the responsibilities that an accredited department has, costs, et cetera, the benefits of it. So, I asked Chief Fisher to put together a presentation for you tonight to further explain more about Fire Department accreditation, something he knows a lot about. He participates in the National Accrediting Agency, and so he's a real expert on that. So, I'd like him to discuss the benefits of the North Kansas City Department to become accredited. So, Gary?
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. You know, before I start, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. This is a fairly lengthy presentation, so I would encourage you to stop me along the way and ask any questions that you might have, because it's long enough that I think you might kind of get lost in some of the issues and some of the conversation that we have. So, please stop me anywhere along the way and ask any questions that might pop into your mind. So, I'm going to start back in the late 80s, early 90s. Ron Coleman, who was kind of considered the father of the fire service way back when, him and a bunch of fire chiefs got together and developed a concept paper that would set to establish a minimum set of standards for fire departments across the country. Then, over time, an agreement was reached with ICMA, International City Managers Association, and together they started CFAI, or Commission on Fire Accreditation International. And that was founded in 1996, and it has a 501(c)(3). Later, CFAI expanded into CPSE, or the Center for Public Safety Excellence, Center for Public Safety Excellence accredits fire departments, but they also provide credentialing and designations for various ranks within the fire service. But, at any rate, so, they got together and got this thing rolling with CPSE, and over time, the board has expanded. And what you're seeing in front of you is the Board of Directors, which, obviously, International Association of Fire Chiefs, also the IAFF is on the Board of Directors, ICMA, Insurance Services Offices, National Fire Protection Association, and the Department of Defense. Department of Defense is fairly recent, within the last 15 years or so. All fire department, military fire department installations are required to become accredited. And so, they are on the board. They have a little bit different requirements than the civilian fire departments.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Why do you have a 501(c)(3)? Is that so you can take donations?
Yes, yes.
What's that for?
And so, they can avoid tax, and they're a nonprofit, and so, they, gives them a little more latitude in terms of the tax liability. So, accreditation, it's important to think of accreditation as an ongoing cycle. There's really no endpoint to accreditation. It forms a working basis for what we like to call continuous quality improvement. Continuous quality improvement has been an aspect or segment of the medical community for forever, and it's now migrated its way over into the fire service. And the question is, what can we do today that would be a little bit better than what we did yesterday? And that's really the essence of continuous quality improvement. Everything we've done for the last four years, since I've been here, has been on a continuous quality improvement process, and we have made tremendous strides in terms of continuous quality improvement. It actually helps shift an organization from focusing on outputs to focusing on outcomes, which is obviously very different. Through the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, benchmarks have been established as best practices from around the country, and actually around the world. There are fire departments in Europe that are accredited as well, and Canada. And there are currently 234 internationally accredited fire agencies, so it's a fairly exclusive group in terms of who has exerted the effort to become accredited. So, there are essentially three components to accreditation, and I'm going to go through each one typically by the order that they would be accomplished. Self-assessment and strategic planning can be flip-flopped, and you don't necessarily have to do it in any specific order on those two, but the Standard of Cover, or essentially the Standards of Coverage, is a document that has to be completed first, because essentially everything is based off that document. So, the Standard of Cover is the most challenging, and it's also the most time-intensive and resource-intensive document or part of accreditation. It consists of analysis on a risk and probability of loss within the community, as well as a response analysis and an operational analysis. So, we look at each three of these segments under the Standard of Cover and do an analysis of each one of those. And I can, I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go. The analysis is intended to extensively examine the city's characteristics, boundaries, barriers, both natural and man-made, and it's accomplished by dividing the city into planning zones. Planning zones can be one of three ways. It can be by grid, which you see here. These are typically, these are about quarter-mile, maybe a little bit bigger, but they can be by grid, they can be by risk, or geographic area, which you see here, or they can be some combination of those two. So, once identified, once we decide which system we're going to use, and we decide that by identifying how we're going to get the most information, the most reliable information out of each planning zone. So, you'll notice that this planning zone has about 69, the grid has about 74 planning zones on it. And so, we look at each one of these areas individually, and we look at demographics, land use, access, fire and life risk, historical significance. So, for example, if we had a really old building somewhere, that would be very important to us, to maintain the fire safety of that building. And then, we look at any economic impacts. For example, if something happened to Harris, that would have a huge economic impact on us. So, once each one of those planning zones is analyzed in terms of those different demographics, then we look at those and apply the different aspects of fire, EMS, hazardous materials, and tactical rescue, and how all those demographics affect each one of those four different areas of the fire service. And ultimately, each planning zone is assigned a level of risk. And so, for example, in Planning Zone 47, that would be where Ingredion is, that might have a, might come back with a risk of high. If you look at Planning Zone 2, where the levee is, that might come back as a risk of low. So, and then, we would assign each one of those in that way, based on each one of the four different parameters. Any questions so far? I'm waltzing through this pretty fast, so I just want to make sure I don't get ahead of anybody.
I've got a, oh, go ahead.
I just had a, one, two generalized questions.
Okay.
I hope it doesn't interfere with the way that you have to present your discussion. Number one is, and we talked about this, I think, the last time we talked about accreditation, but I'm not foggy, I'm kind of foggy on it. How will this benefit North Kansas City?
I'm sorry?
How will this benefit North Kansas City to be accredited? I know the answer to it, but I, maybe everyone doesn't really know. And secondly, at what cost to the city do we reach accreditation?
Both of those come at the end, so if you hold that thought.
Okay, chief. All right. I don't want to spoil your presentation.
No, no, you're good, but we will cover that extensively, the cost, because that is, that is a significant piece of all of this, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interfere with you.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I've got a question. As far as on these different zones and the level of risk I was reading on that, does that mean that, as far as staffing, will we have to have more firefighters on staff if it's a higher risk, or is it just something that they will have to address? Is it going to be a burden, or is it going to be anything economically to the company that says, hey, you have to do a certain amount of things to mitigate this risk? Can I understand what I'm saying?
Well, not necessarily. Okay, so, let's say that you look at a planning zone that was in, was a high risk.
Let's say like Ingredion, like you were talking about.
Like Ingredion. So, Ingredion is, we, in our response plan right now, we have a system built in where we call for mutual aid. And so, we have 15 people on duty on any given day, and I'll show you here a little bit what 15 people can do, because we've already done some task, critical tasking analysis on that. So, for, like Ingredion, we would, we would call mutual aid, we would staff up in that way, which would not require the city to hire any more people or anything like that. It's, the idea is, is that you don't necessarily have to hire anybody, you just have to be able to provide the staffing and the manpower for the incident. So, if that, if that includes calling mutual aid from another city, that's okay. It's requiring us to look at each risk and then mitigating that risk and identifying the resources needed to mitigate that risk. Is that, if that, does that make any sense?
Yeah, somewhat.
Okay. So, really, I mean, the size of the fire department, and I'll try to do this very quickly, but the size of the fire department is really based on several things. Is the council satisfied with the services that are going on? Do you have huge fire and life loss within the city where you have shortages of people? What can you afford in terms of a city? What is your EMS load, and can you, can you handle that with the people that you have? And you take all those things, all those pieces and parts, and you put it in there, and you consider that, and that's how you determine what size fire department you have, primarily driven by what you can afford. And so, just because you do a standard of cover doesn't mean that you automatically start looking for more people. That's, that's not the way it works at all. You, you take what you have and what you have access to, and then you manage that as best you can, if that makes any sense. Okay. So, okay, so, we've, we've essentially looked at all of the planning zones, we've done analysis on all the planning zones, all the risk and all those sorts of things. The next thing we want to do is look at response stuff, baseline, and establish baseline measurements. And then, once we establish baseline measurements, so the baseline measurements are what are we doing today? And then, once we establish all of that, then we would set benchmarks. In other words, what can we do better tomorrow? So, for example, in this particular case, if you, if you look at this, we would go back three years and pull all the response records for three years. And this is not, this is not North Kansas City, this is just an example of what we would do. But, you would look at the total response time. In this case, you see that's five minutes, six minutes, and eight minutes and 15 seconds. So, what they're doing is they're breaking this down into fractals. So, 51% of the time, we get there in five minutes. 70% of the time, we get there in six minutes, and 90% of the time, we get there in eight minutes and 15 seconds. It's totally different from the average total response time, which you see below that, at six minutes and 14 seconds. Totally different. Fractal times are based on percentage, and average times are based on, you know, the mean of all the times put together. The reason we don't use averages is because you can skew that number. In other words, you can skew it low, or you can skew it high, depending on the number of calls that you might have at either end. But, if you're, if you're looking, if you want to say, nine out of 10 times, I want to be on scene in five minutes, that's a fractal time, that, that you can measure.
Okay, these, these, this is not us. Do we have?
No.
Do we have our records to say?
We do, we do.
Where do we fall in that right now?
Not, not to this, no. But, it would be, but it's going to be similar, it's going to be similar. It might be a few seconds either way, but it'll be similar.
I see, okay.
Yeah. And then, we would look at dispatch, dispatch processing times as well, and all of this goes for the last three years. So, for example, it might look something like this. So, across the top, this particular baseline performance measurement is for fire, moderate risk, so that would be typically like a residential house fire, 20, less than 2,500 square feet, and this is your baseline performance. So, you look, it has the year in the first column, and then it breaks it down into urban and rural setting. So, for CFAI, they require, they require that you break it down separately. For us, we would not have a rural setting, it would all be urban. But, in some cities, they do have both settings. So, if you look over to the left, call processing, turnout time, travel time, and total response time, and it gives you the times, like, for example, in 2013, three minutes and eight seconds to process a call to an urban emergency, or urban, urban fire. And if you look down at the next one, turnout time, this is the first unit turnout time, a minute and 57 seconds. So, for example, we might want to say, and we look at all these other times, but a minute 57 is a low. So, we might say, our baselines are here, but we want to set our benchmark, we're showing, we're going to shoot for a minute and 50 seconds turnout time. So, that would be our benchmark, a minute 50, as opposed to a minute 57. So, we're always trying to improve our times throughout the response spectrum. Then, down at the bottom, it shows the ERF, total, total response time. ERF is Effective Response Force, so depending on the risk and potential for loss would depend on what the Effective Response Force is. So, for example, a dumpster fire might be one, one engine, and that's it. So, the first unit responding and the Effective Response Force would be the same, but for a house fire, you might have three engines and a ladder. So, how long does it take to get the first one go on scene, and how long does it take to get everybody on scene, the Effective Response Force? Because we need to measure that to see when we can actually go to work, and we'll talk about why we need that here in just a second. So, so, we've looked at the, we've looked at the planning zones, and now we're looking at the response, response times. If we move on to the critical tasking, so we, essentially, we've gotten the call, we know what's out there in the city, and we've responded, and we've gotten on scene. Now, what are we doing once we get on scene? And we're doing critical tasking analysis. So, we look at each one of the tasks that we do when we get on scene, we establish, again, we establish baselines, and then we set benchmarks. So, if you look here, we know that every day, this is our staffing within the fire department. We have two engines, two ambulances, a ladder truck, and a battalion chief, for a total of 15 people on scene. So, we know that we have 15 people, and we base that on, on what we can accomplish for the, for the tasking. So, then, we look at, and this again, is for a 2,500-square-foot house fire, and we look at how we would deploy each one of those resources. So, you see, the first engine is on scene in six minutes, 16 seconds, so that might be a minute to process the call, two minutes turnout time, and three minutes travel time. Battalion chief gets on scene, assumes command, does a size-up, and assigns crews, that might take like a minute. And so, we go through each step and each piece of the, of what's going to happen on that fire, and identify how many people we're going to need, and how much time is it going to take. And I'll stop right there and ask, is there any questions? I'm getting some puzzles.
Do you assign a team of people, or who actually aggregates all this information to make it an accreditation presentation? I mean...
The accreditation manager.
So, is that assigned out of our fire department? Somebody gets the lucky job of being the accreditation manager, or?
Well, the hope is, is that we could hire someone within the fire department that could do that.
And that would be more or less a full-time job for a limited time, period of time, finite period of time, to get it together.
No, remember, this is an ongoing thing, it never stops.
Okay, so, that's what that, he or she would be assigned to do?
About 50% of their time, we think.
And maybe more in the early years, right?
Maybe starting out, maybe a little more.
That had, that's one thing that we, we talked about as being part of our public safety sales tax, is to fund the, the new position that would, the management analyst that would largely do this.
So, a lot of this information, similar to this, is already in your hands.
Yes.
You, you know a great deal about what our response time is, where our shortcomings are, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
So, it would be more or less analyzing all of that and making some kind of sense out of how it could be improved?
Yes.
Okay, so, that's a job of a computer, kind of, isn't it?
Sort of, yes.
Sort of, yes? Okay.
Somebody that understands numbers and is able to work with fractals and, and large data sets, yes.
Okay, do you draw your information from other entities and other jurisdictions and things, or is it all strictly internal with us?
It's all internal with us.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions as we go? Okay. So, so, so far, we've analyzed the city, developed, divided into planning zones, and we know what's out there. We've looked at our baseline response times, and our, and we've set our benchmarks, and then we've looked at our baseline task analysis, set our, established our baselines, and we're setting our benchmarks. So, the next thing that we want to do is put all that stuff together into a document, and what we would do is we'd bring that to council, decisions based on what programs and services the fire department might offer. So, it's, it just improves your decision-making ability.
Is that information then forwarded to some national or international board of accreditation, and then they look at what you have done post, post-improvement and after-improvement, and then they say?
Yes.
This is something that they really put some thought into, and they're doing a good job, so we think they should be accredited?
Yes.
It's out of our hands, then, basically, and it's on their shoulders to make that determination?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
What they, what CFAI does is they, they will send a team of peer assessors on site, and, and they will evaluate and validate every document that we develop. They will interview, they will interview the city administrator, they will interview folks on the floor, at the fire station, they will interview finance director, they will interview a number of folks to make sure that what we have written down actually is what's happening in real life.
In a perfect world, how long does it take to get accredited if you present your documents to the organization?
If you, probably two years.
Two years.
But, the reality is, you're probably looking more like three years.
Three years.
By the time you get somebody trained and so forth, and I, and I, I'll give you that timeline here in just a second, but it'll probably, it would probably be three years before we could actually accomplish that. So...
Thank you.
Okay, so, from, so, that's the Standard of Cover, and that is a, that's a very comprehensive document, and it would take us some time to put that together. Once we get the Standard of Cover done, we move into the next segment, which is the Self-Assessment Manual. Within the Self-Assessment Manual, there are 10 categories that are evaluated. Governance Administration, Assessment and Planning Goals. Governance Administration would be how, how do you have your management system set up? Assessment and Planning would be your strategic plan. Goals, what goals have you set, and how do they correlate with the council's goals? Financial Resources, it's how we finance the department and how we pay for things. Different programs, CPR programs, fire extinguisher programs, those kinds of things. Physical Resources, stations and engines and equipment. Human Resources, obviously, are the people. What training and competencies do we require and conduct? What essential resources do we need? Water Department, radio communications, those kinds of things. And then, External Systems Relationships, mutual aid partners, and what we do with mutual aid folks. So, we look at all that stuff. Within those, within those 10 categories, there are 200, 244 performance indicators that we must address. And 86 of those are what they call core indicators, and so, those 86 are, are indicators that we have to be doing to become accredited. The others, we don't necessarily have to be doing, we just have to develop a plan on how to get there. And so, but those 86 are absolutes, you have to be able to do those. For example, one might, one is that the fire department is legally established. You might be surprised how many fire departments in this country are not legally established. It's, it's amazing. But, we are, so that wouldn't be an issue for us, but those kinds of things are core issues that we would have to do.
What do you mean legally established? What is, what does that mean?
That there's been some kind of enabling legislation that has been passed by the governing body to say that the fire department can enforce codes, enforce a fire code, building code, and those kinds of things, and can enter structures and extinguish fires and all of that stuff. So, okay, so, all right, so, once we do that, we start on the performance indicators, there's 244 of them. On each one of them, we look at, what are we doing? Is it working? So, what are we doing? That's the description. Is it working? That's the appraisal. How can we make it better? That's the plan. And then, what proof do we have? So, we have to provide references for all that. And this is an example of one of the performance indicators. Significant economic indicators are used in, used in the planning effort are, are identified. And so, that includes revenue resources, economic factors, insurance evaluations, assessed valuation of various components. So, we have to write a description on what we're, what we're doing, how we're addressing that performance indicator. And you see in your, in your documents there, we have all of that. But, we get down to the end for the plan. For this particular one, the plan could be, may not be all-inclusive, but it could be, the North Kansas City Fire Department, multi-year goal is to obtain a Class 1 ISO public protection rating. The agency will continue to support the city master plan as it relates to development efforts and marketing of the city as a great place to have a business. And the department will strive to fund, find new sources of revenue that may include fees, grants, or other things pursuant to council approval. So, that would be our plan. How are we going to do it better tomorrow than we did it today? And then, the last part of this is the strategic planning process. So, we had the, had this SOC, the Standard of Cover, and we have the Self-Assessment Manual, and now we have the Strategic Plan. And with the strategic planning, as you all know, you went through the strategic planning process recently, and very similar, we would pull the findings from the SOC, we would have a community meetings and establish community expectations. It would serve as a tool for future planning, and it would help us develop our goals and objectives through the, for the strategic plan. So, let's talk about the process here for a second, so now we're going to get into the, to the money part. So, essentially, an agency that decides to pursue accreditation has to follow a specific process. This is kind of a timeline, this is not really set in stone, it's just kind of how it could flow, not necessarily how it would flow. But, the first step is to become a registered agency. That is good for three years, that status is good for three years. And with that, CFAI will, CFAI will provide you a copy of the Self-Assessment Manual, give you training, web-based training, give you templates to work on your documents, provide additional tools for networking, where you can talk to other accreditation managers, and essentially get you started into the process. And at this time, we would have to identify an accreditation manager, which is required. The accreditation manager has to go to at least two training sessions and do one site visit. And so, you'll see some money in this, that includes that here in just a minute. All of that can be done simultaneously, as we're putting the documents together, but it all has to be done before the accreditation can actually happen. Then, you become an applicant agency. An applicant agency is good for 18 months. Each time you change status, you change dollars, and I'll show you that here in just a second. But, it's, once you become an applicant agency, you should be well underway with your Standard of Cover and your Self-Assessment Manual. It's not something that you can wait to do, you should be working on that already. And then, at the end of 18 months, the agency should be ready to become a candidate agency. If you're not quite, if the agency is not quite ready, the CFA can provide an extension, typically up to about four months, and then that's really, that's really it. If you don't, if you aren't ready for candidate age, or applicant agency, then you could lose your fees that you pay if you're not ready in 18 months. But, that's something that, that is negotiable between CFAI... But that's something that, that is negotiable between CFAI and, and the fire department. Next do- next step is becoming a candidate agency. And that means that you've completed all three documents and, uh, all three phases, and you're ready for a site visit by, uh, the CFA, uh, peer team. They will review the documents. They'll come out and look at the, at all the documents. And then, uh, and then, um, uh, they'll come out and look at all the documents. There's, there'll be about a four to five-member team. They'll be onsite for approximately four days, sometimes five days, but typically four. And they'll review the SOC, the strategic plan. They'll look at all the documents, uh, watch and observe, uh, the different aspects of the department. They'll interview employees. We kind of talked about some of this already. And then the team will make recommendations, uh, based on industry best practices related to any kind of process improvements that they see that they think we could use that would be helpful in what we do. Then they would put their, uh, they would have a meeting before they leave. They would tell us what they're going to recommend to the commission. They would rec- make recommendations to the commission. That has to be either accreditation, uh, deferral or denial. If you get a deferral, you have up to one year to fix all of the issues and come back. If you get a denial, you have to start all over. Commission meets twice a year in March and August, and they, they hear all of the, uh, applications for accreditation. If the peer team, uh, peer assessors recommend accreditation, then you become accredited agency status. And that is good for five years. Every year, you have to send in an ACR or an annual compliance report. And you have to describe what improvements you've made and any changes in the organization that have happened. Like, for example, if the fire chief retires, um, somebody else has come in, you would, that would need to be reported in the, uh, annual compliance report. At the end of five years, uh, you'd start all over and go through the process again. There are agencies that have been accredited since the late nineties. I try to do one site visit a year. I've been asked to go to Naperville, Illinois, uh, in May, and this will be their fifth accreditation. So they've had this for twenty-four years, uh, in Naperville. They were one of the first sites to get accredited. Uh, but they've gone, every five years, they've gone through the process again. So, the cost. So registered a- agency status, uh, is five hundred and seventy dollars. That's the minimum. Accreditation manager training, remember, you may recall that we have to get a, um, accreditation manager trained. So that's going to be about three thousand dollars for that, we estimate. Once you, uh, apply for applicant agency status, uh, that's forty-eight hundred dollars. That's the lowest. It's based on population, but it's, that is the lowest, uh, fee available. Then you have candidate agency status. That's six thousand dollars includes, that pays for the site or the, uh, peer team to come onsite and evaluate and, and, and validate, uh, your documents. So they actually come onsite, spend three or four days here and, uh, uh, write their report. So that's six, yeah, we, we're required to pay for all their travel, lodging, uh, and meals. Because it's all volunteer. Uh, they, the guys do not get paid for any of that. It's all volunteer on their own time. And then you, uh, when you, if you move into accredited agency status, that fifty-five hundred dollars will pay for the fire chief, the accreditation manager, and the team leader to go back to the commission hearings and answer, or answer any questions that the commission might have regarding your application for accreditation. So total hard costs for that is about twenty thousand dollars, give or take. There could be other sauce, other costs associated. CFAI says to use a number of three thousand to ten thousand. Frankly, I would be surprised if we had three thousand dollars' worth of soft costs. The reason I say that is, we've pretty much done everything that we need to do. And I don't, I don't see a lot of extra costs coming up for us. Uh, and then if you include the management analyst, that could add another forty-two thousand dollars. So the potential cost could be up to seventy thousand dollars, uh, for a five-year accreditation. So the benefits, it makes us better as a fire department in terms of qualifying service delivery. It drives a culture of continuous quality improvement, improves morale, pride of ownership. It gives us additional credit for our insurance rating, uh, provides additional marketing tools for community development, demonstrates effectiveness and excellence to the community. It assures that we have a direction in terms of mission and vision and values in our strategic plan. Identifies our strengths and weaknesses that we can work on and, and improve. And it provides a forum for communicating, uh, the organization's abilities to city council so the city council can make informed decisions on programs and services from, uh, the, from the fire department. And I, I know I moved through that fairly quickly. Yes, sir?
Uh, that fire rating, that's just for commercial?
It is, it is, yes, that is for commercial.
And that's our, of course, our, uh, our people that pay the most money?
Yes.
That would help them.
Yes.
I know when I came to work here, I think we was a six and proud of it. You know, and then we made many changes to get to the two. You know, so over time, you know, we've, we've had to save the commercial spend thousands of dollars in their insurance ratings.
Yes.
You know, I kind of see this, you know, somebody asked me, well, can't you still fight fires and save lives without this? And I said, well, sure you can.
Sure.
I said, but it's improvement. It's, uh, a standard of excellence to me. Of course, I came from the fire service. But if you want to look at it, and, uh, some people that's not in the fire service is, uh, take education, for, uh, example. You know, you got the associate degrees if you go to college, the bachelor's degree. This is like, uh, the doctor degree, you know, to me. And I, and I think it is across the nation. You're talking about two hundred and some fire department. We got thousands of fire departments.
Yes, about ten thousand.
About ten thousand fire departments. There's only two hundred and something of them as a credit. I think, uh, no, we don't need it to put out fires. We don't need it to come in your house and pick you up, you know? But it's, it's, it improves everything. If you want to be the first class or not for this kind of money, I mean, I, I don't see how we can lose on it.
I would agree. I think at your last session, where, as you said, there was only four in the state of Missouri.
If we're in the Kansas City area.
Yeah, there's only, there's only four. Kansas City isn't accredited, are they?
No. Blue Springs.
Lee Summit.
Um, Lee Summit, Overland Park, Lenexa. I think that's it.
I'm wondering, i- is the, is the reason that stations don't do, or fire departments don't do that is either, number one, it's too financially hard on them, or two, it's too laborious to go through all of this to get it done? Why would somebody like Kansas City, a giant in, in assets, wouldn't bother to get that done? That's pocket change to them.
Well, the fees are a lot more for a city that size.
Oh, okay.
But it, it is, it's, you're exactly right. It's number two. It is very labor-intensive in terms of putting your documents together, looking at the data, doing research. I mean, there, there's a lot of work that's involved, uh, to research this and validate, you know? I mean, intuitively, we kind of know, it, it's like Councilmember Stewart says, you know, we, we can still put the fires out, but are we doing it the best way that we can? And is there a better way to do it as, as opposed to what we're doing? And unless you actually look at the numbers, do the critical tasking analysis and say, uh, okay, so we, we can do this in this amount of time with this amount of people, uh, unless you look at that, you really don't know for sure. And so it's, it's, uh, it validates what you think you know. And because we, we think we're pretty darn good. But if somebody said, you know, uh, wh- how much, uh, what is your say, what is your loss ratio for a room and contents fire? I don't know. Because we haven't looked at that. But, but that information is out there. And so it just validates your quality, uh, service.
This would un- this would uncover everything possible that we would want to know about our department.
Everything.
Everything.
That'll be more than you want to know.
Yeah. Uh, Eric, did you say most of this would be covered maybe by the sales, safety sales tax if it passes?
Yes, sir. Well, we, we had a work session a time or two ago in which, uh, the, the police chief and the fire chief laid out their ideas for using the additional revenue that would be obtained. And one of, uh, the fire chief's, uh, recommendations was that we would use some of that additional revenue to hire management analyst, uh, who would, uh, Gary's saying, about fifty percent of the time, maybe once we've got it rolling, but more in the early stages. So it was our intention in the, uh, informational materials that we're now developing for the voters to indicate that that's one of the things that we would spend that additional revenue on would be a, a new position for that.
So this would be an ongoing cost every five years, basically?
It would, yes.
And probably it would be exact, a little bit more because of, they wouldn't charge you the same amount of money, I'm sure, every...
Well, that's always possible. They've not increased, uh, prices since they've started. So, I mean, yeah, so, but, but it's possible. They could increase that and then...
Nothing goes down.
Yeah. But the accredit, the annual accredit, annual compliance report, uh, that doesn't cost anything to, to, for that part of it. It's just that every five years thing that you have to...
Now, do most jurisdictions sail through this without any bumps as far as they get accredited? And then something screws up and they have to reexamine their position? And then that costs a little bit more money to bring you back up to snuff? Is that how that works or...?
Well, it's possible. What happens, what usually happens, my experience is, what usually happens is that the agencies do not maintain, do not pay attention and maintain and update their records. And so there's a specific requirement in the accreditation that they look at. We have to look at every document at least annually to make sure that the information in there is still relevant. And that's where most fire departments fall down.
Thank you.
Uh, I think it's great that you're looking into, improve the fire department. It's a great department as it is, I think. A lot of the stuff you talked about, the, uh, continuous quality improvement, seeing what we can do to improve response times, self-assessment and planning, that's all stuff that we could and should be doing without having to go through, or jump through all these hoops to get this accreditation. Also something I think we need to look at is the cost and the human resources that this is going to take versus the benefit that these, the, the citizens and the, and the business community get out of this. I actually, I would like to see, uh, see some numbers on exactly what is going to save the businesses. We're already a two. Kansas City's a three on the ISO, I think. So we're one of the best ISO ratings in this area anyway. I did check with a, a rather large property owner in the city just to see, get their opinion on it. And they said their, they checked with their insurance companies, and their savings were almost negligible. So I'd like to see some information on exactly what is going to save the business community compared to what it's going to cost the city in time and resources, uh, and the, and the money. So before I made any kind of decision on it, I'd like to see a little more on the actual benefit that the, actually, it's the, it's the business community is going to be the only benefit because it's not going to benefit the residents at all as far as insurance rates. And I see that as being the biggest benefit of this whole deal. So I'd just like to see a little more information on that.
And I would definitely, I mean, I recognize and agree with you. Some of these benefits are, you look at them and they're somewhat intangible. You can't really quantify. Most of the, most of the benefits come within the department in terms of morale and better efficiencies. The community itself, they would probably never know that we're doing things better than we did them yesterday.
Right, and, and I agree with that, with what you're saying too. But, but what I'm saying is that, that we can, we can do all these things that you were talking about and increase morale. I think we can do that internally without having to jump through all these hoops just to get this doctorate we could hang on the wall or, you know? It's, it's just something that, yeah, it looks good hanging on the wall, but...
Yeah.
Is it really doing that much for us that we can't do on our, by ourselves without that? That's my...
Chief, I got a couple of questions. First one, do we have any physical things? I know you, you wanted to get faster doors for the, the fire department. Well, if, the way our buildings are built, we can't get faster doors. Uh, to get to the, you know, these times, do we have any physical thing that, uh, you know, that just wouldn't allow us to get to the number one rating?
Well, yes, actually, you, you, are you talking about the ISO rating?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. No, our training, uh, could be improved. And we've improved that significantly. When I first got here, we were a three.
Yeah.
And then, uh, they came in and rated us in four, two thousand fourteen, I think it was. And, uh, because of the training and because of the fire prevention programs that we started up, they gave us credit for all of that, uh, which dropped us to a two. You still have, you still have room to go to a one in terms of, uh, other prevention programs. And, and then the, uh, accreditation itself provides points towards, uh, ISO one.
I'd raise my, my second question is, it sounds like we have to have some leadership over there that is real passionate about this. Do you plan on standing, staying for the next ten years or...?
Probably not. But I mean, if you, if council decided that that's what you wanted to do, there, there are a lot of fire chiefs out there that, uh, believe accreditation is a good thing. And so you would look for somebody that, uh, um, that would support that, support that model. You know, we have, we have battalion chiefs that think it's a good thing. So I think that, you know, the, the support would be there if, if council decides to go in that direction. That, that wouldn't be an issue in the future.
I, I don't see that it couldn't possibly help in hiring new recruits when they come in and they ain't going to know they're going to work for an accredited fire department. I would think that would be the same thing as, you know, being a Navy SEAL compared to somebody that washes dishes for the Air Force. Now, not that that's not an important job too, but you know, it's, it, there's more intangible, uh, benefits to this, I would think. And I don't see how we could improve our standing now more because we're going to have to have a dedicated person to come up with this information. You're going to have to have a guy or a gal that does that. You don't have the time to figure all this stuff out to, I mean, we might be able to improve this much, but with, with somebody else, we could improve that much. I don't know how we could do it.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. The, the way we get to this, the way we get to this is having a person that coordinates. Because all of the chief officers, the captains, and all the firefighters, uh, have programs and, and, uh, and, uh, processes that they already are responsible for. And so this is, this is so time-consuming, you need to have somebody else there that's going to drive that. You know, to, to, uh, Councilmember Kissler's point earlier, I mean, we still put, we still put out fires, and we do that very well. And we, we are tracking these numbers. But the issue for us is we don't, we don't have time, and we don't have anybody that can sit down and really look at the data and collate the data and say, here's what you're doing, and here's what you need to work on. We've got the raw numbers. It just, we, we're not really sure how best to manage that.
Well, if the, if the safety sales, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eric. Forgive me.
Couple of quick things here. I've been waiting patiently to ask my questions. Number one, I like the concept and I like the continuous improvement, uh, to quality. On some of these other costs, it, it, could those hard costs for the application fees and all of that, if we were to get the sales tax passed, could some of that cost come out of that, do you think?
Oh, yes, sir. I, I think we would, we would use that additional revenue for, for those costs.
Okay. And, you know, I, I kind of, you know, I understand, uh, people wanting to see some more information, and that's always good too. I could support this. I think it would be kind of contingent for me, though, is if we can get that public safety sales tax passed. I think it'd be, you know, a good marketing tool for North Kansas City, and you can say that you've got one of the best... and you can say that you've got one of the best fire departments, even though we do already. But it's, you know, I think a lot of it would contingent upon, you know, the sales tax passing as well. That's all I want to say.
Fred, talk, Fred, Fred.
Well, initially, I was kind of against this to a certain extent. But I can see the benefits to it also. So there's pros and cons to this. And I look at it, and the way I see here is the total cost, the hard cost, plus the soft cost for the total estimate, cost estimate, would be about $70,000. And that $70,000 would last you for five years, correct? Well, that's about $14,000 a year. Now, you look at $14,000 a year of your expenditures, and you look at all the different businesses, how much their insurance could possibly reduce. Now, it might not be much, but a little bit. But you add all these businesses together, and it's going to drop a certain amount. I don't know what that amount is, but. And then there's the factor, the intangible. And that is, and two intangible factors. One is, would this be a boost to the morale? Would, and also, would it be an enticement or recruitment of future personnel? And if those are there, I could see where that would be a very good benefit. And I don't want to get, lastly, I don't want to get involved in, to looking at it as different academic degrees. It's more like certificates. And what I mean by that is, it shows that your department, or any department that is accredited, and there's only four departments in the whole metropolitan area that are accredited currently. But it shows that that agency that has minimal accreditation is, that has accreditation, meets minimal standards to reach this. That's all it says. Those that don't have that, they have nothing. And that's what it is. It's a zero. But this shows that you do have a minimal standard. And that relates to the, links to the other areas on recruitment and that sort of thing. Now, in law enforcement, I've seen, the way I understand it, different agencies that got accredited. And the way I understand it is they phased out. They didn't continue it going down the ladder. Which, after a 60-month period of five years, we could also do that. So for $14,000 a year, I would say, your return on investment and your benefits outweigh, at this time, appear to outweigh the cost. Benefits would appear to outweigh the cost right now. But, you know, that's subject to what the future has. I wish I had a crystal ball. I'd be a very rich man.
Well, if this, if sales tax money passes, and let's say we didn't get accredited, you'd have to prove to me somehow that that $14,000 a year could be better spent in some other direction for the fire department and the police department or whatever. Maybe it could, but I don't see, without thinking it through, or what our future problems would be, that that could be any, be any big advantage to just having that, that money for another purpose. That's why I think I could, I very well support the.
And I think the entire intent was that this would be based on the public safety sales tax, that this wouldn't come out of the regular general fund. That would not, that would not be what I would ask for.
Yes, sir. This was really just for information tonight. But I do think I'm hearing from at least a couple of council members that your support for this would be contingent upon the public safety sales tax passing. And we do intend to discuss that in the materials that we're preparing for the voters, which will run by you before we put them out there. So you'll hear some more about this here in the next month or so.
Move to a juror.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.